Good morning and welcome to the Regular Calaveras County Board of Supervisors for November 28, 2023. Madam Clerk, can you please read out from our closed session last week and this week?
Closed session report out for November 7th. Item number one, Pursuit to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation, Calaveras Planning Coalition versus Calaveras County Board of Supervisors at All, Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number 19CV44471. There was no reportable action. Item number two, Pursuit to Government Code Section 54956.9D2, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Anticipated Litigation, One Case, Significant Exposure to Litigation. There was no reportable action taken.
Thank you. And with that, can you please, if you can, please rise for the pledge?
Mr. Chair, may I report out for today's closed session as well?
Yes.
Thank you. Closed session report out for 11:28. Item number one, Pursuit to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation, Green versus County Workers Compensation Appeals Board Case Number ADJ13541418. No reportable action taken.
Thank you. We'll move on to staff announcements. This is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public. And I see a couple items on here. Nancy?
Good morning, Board. I'm Nancy Giddens, County Library. Greetings to all of you. I thank you, happy for you. Our annual reporter infographic of our annual report, yes. I actually completed this the end of October. I'm sorry I haven't come to give you this wonderful information. We're really thrilled with our statistics this year because we see that after COVID, we have really recovered. We had more than 45,000 people walk through our doors in fiscal year 2223. Over half of our population have library cards, which gives us great joy. We continue to add to our collection, and I want to just point out to you, the electronic collection that we have is that four billion item. Those are our eBooks, audiobooks, all of our digital materials, which are provided for us through a donation from the Friends of Calaveras County Library. They pay for all of our digital resources. So we're really thrilled to be able to offer that to our county. And our digital use was up again this year. About 34% of our use was digital, which is great because it shows that our efforts to connect people and offer devices is working out. We had one, a great increase in our number of programs with over 7,000 people attending over 500 programs. So I think another really interesting thing is, you probably don't see this as interesting, but I really do. The program at the left with the trucks, that's our interlibrary loan. And I just find it interesting that we loan more than we borrow, which makes me happy because that means that our collection is of interest to more than just our county. So I just wanted to say that we do all this fantastic work with just 10.53 staff. And you might say, but wait a minute, you have eight branches or eight sites. How do you do that? Well, we just have one person in each of our, of our branches at a time. But these people work tirelessly to bring wonderful programming and wonderful service to our community. I just wanted to also say that if you have never visited the Central Library here in San Andreas, you need to come and see it. There is not a person from outside this county who walks through those doors and doesn't say, oh my goodness. We are so blessed with a fantastic facility for the size of our community. And you can see my staff bustling around, creating all the wonderful programs and creating all the wonderful resources that we offer to our county. So we are happy with what we have been able to do in this past year, and things are bustling. From July now, I've been looking at our stats, and they're going to be a lot higher next year. So we're very, very thrilled to serve our community in this way, and I hope to see you at the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Other staff announcements?
Good morning, Chair. Honorable Board, Kathy Galino, Economic and Community Development Director. Just a couple of quick announcements. One of which is that we have the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy that's out for public review, and that will be continuing until this Thursday. So if you haven't had the opportunity to, to review the document and provide input, please do so. That's also located on the county homepage. There's a link directly to the document, and it's really a five-year plan and guide for how economic development will be moving forward in Calaveras County. The second thing we have is the Economic Development Community Survey. So there's a survey also located on the county homepage where we're asking the community, the community to please put in their input into what they think is important for their communities as far as economic development, business retention, business growth, other types of strategies that are important to this county going forward. So that will continue on until the first week of December. The last thing I have is broadband. Yes, we're doing the low-level design for broadband in Calaveras County that's going to cover the first 40 to 50 miles, our first broadband deployment. Very exciting. We've had initial meeting last week, and we'll be continuing moving forward. And I will be providing an update to the board on what those first 50 miles will look like. And also on the community survey, it is available not just online, but with a partnership with the library. Thank you, Nancy. We do have paper surveys available for those who are not able to do the survey online. So please reach out to me or stop by one of the libraries. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Jesse, you have an announcement for us?
Good morning, Chair Toffenelli, Honorable Members of the Board, Jesse Fowler, Agricultural Commissioner. With Thanksgiving behind us and Christmas and its generous tradition of sharing ahead, I'm here to remind all of the residents of Calaveras and all of California that they should not be moving homegrown produce across county or state borders. Why? Moving citrus as well as other fruits and vegetables, especially from overseas travel, creates a risk of spreading invasive insects, including exotic fruit flies, which could lead to an estimated $20 billion economic loss of production here in just California alone. In a normal year, there are typically only one or two invasive insect quarantines as local and state partners affect those, or treat those affected areas and remove the pest. However, as pre-pandemic numbers return and international shipping and travel has become commonplace once more, we have seen an extraordinary surge in invasive insect detections here in California. As proof of this, at the moment, so currently, right now, we have seven invasive fruit fly quarantines, whereas normally we only have one or two in an entire year. And those are in Los Angeles, Ventura, Riverside, San Bernardino, Contra Costa, Santa Clara, and Sacramento. So there are maps, quarantines, and quarantine restrictions, and other information on these quarantines available online at the California Department of Food and Agriculture. What can residents do to help? So don't pack a pest. That's number one. So help prevent future introductions of invasive pests by leaving backyard fruit right where you found it, and declare all agricultural products for inspection when you enter over state lines or any kind of trouble whatsoever. And then also make sure if you're going to ship, you go through official channels that allow for proper treatment of commodities or certification, and report anything that you do find, any fruit fly maggots that you find in backyard fruit. You can call either the California Department of Food and Agriculture hotline at 1-800-491-1899, or our department, the Agriculture Department, at 209-754-6504. With the ongoing unprecedented quarantines across California, I urge residents not to inadvertently pack a pest by transporting fresh fruits and vegetables from any area domestically or globally, visiting friends and families over the holidays. So, any questions?
Thank you, Jesse.
Yep, no problem.
Are there any of these stuff, staff announcements in the room? Seeing none, is there any staff announcements?
No, there is not.
Not? Okay. I'm going to move the next item with the recognition to, after general public comment. I'm going to go to general public comment next. General public comment, any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter and jurisdiction of the board, and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during public comment period. California law prohibits the Board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before 30 minutes allotted time, the Board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during allotted time period, it may be continued to the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder comments to be heard. Public comments, are there public comments in the room? Hi, Kate.
Good morning, Board. My name is Kate Allen. I'm the president of the San Andreas Merchants Association, and I'm just here today to thank the Board for allocating funds to the San Andreas Merchants Association a couple weeks ago, and specifically to thank Supervisor Toffenelli for nominating our community organization to receive those funds. I hope that as you drove in this morning, you saw immediate return on your investment when you noticed the garland and bows that are wrapped on the lampposts, Mount Rancho to the entrance of the government center. We were able to do that with the funds that we received from the Board of Supervisors. So thank you. The San Andreas Merchants also recently put up new banners and decorated the lampposts and a new skyline on Main Street in San Andreas. That was made possible by donations from the Dignity Health Medical, Mark III Medical Center, and Calaveras Arts Council as well. So we're very pleased and hope that you notice coming into San Andreas that we've got some new decorations this year. I also wanted to invite you to join us for caroling and candy canes on Main, which is this Friday from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. We will be celebrating on Main Street in San Andreas. So we would like to invite you to carol, sing with us, and drink hot chocolate, and have a free candy cane to enjoy the new decorations. And again, thank you so much on behalf of the San Andreas Merchants Association for your support.
Thank you, Kate. Do you have other public comments?
Good morning, Board. My name is Elfrimia. I am an IHSS provider. I'm also a SEIU 2015 member, and we will be coming and hopefully come back to the table with you in regards to your contract, something that gives providers who are providing the service not only to the community, but we live here, we spend money here, we develop, we help with your senior citizens, we have workers that are helpful to your elderly who don't have family to take care of them. We save the government thousands of dollars by being paid very little, but we're here for you. We want you to know that we're here in the community, that we exist. We're always looking for just a livable wage, something to put gas in our tanks, food on our tables. We don't ask for much. We understand that hard times are everywhere. Inflation is everywhere. But we want you to let, let you know that we're here. We exist, and we're helpful. Your silver tsunamis are coming out all the time, and every year that one more comes out, they don't have the family. Us ourselves will be in that age, or maybe just me, will be in that age bracket saying, well, who's going to take care of me? I'm just grateful that IHSS providers are here and live very minimally. Like I said, we save the government thousands of dollars, and yet we put our income, our little income, back into the community, back into the stores, the gas stations, the small restaurants that are still barely keeping them alive. We are here to ask you to think of us as if you thought of yourselves, to say, I'm glad I'm not in that situation, but what can I do? You know, I didn't even realize that we have so many. You have over 794 providers here in this county alone. And we're just asking that you talk to us, think of us, remember us. We wear the sign of purple because it's a cool color. We like, I'm kidding, but I'm not. And we just want you to know that, you know, we're living on barely scrapes. The Christmas season, it's not a Christmas season for us because, you know, we're barely going by. You know, we were, we were buying chickens when the egg prices went up because we can't afford to buy eggs in the store anymore. So these are things that are just, we wanted you to recognize that we're here. Thank you.
Any other public comments in the room?
My name's Carlos Tossi. I am a provider for my spouse, Janu Vinay Young, who broke her neck just over four and a half years ago, and I've been taking care of her since. And I only get so many hours per month, and that's just not quite enough. You know, they only allot me so many hours, and the wage is just enough for us to get by to pay our rent and our bills. And, you know, it's a hard job, and I'm sure any of you could agree if you had to do it yourself, you would, of course, for your family and your spouse. And just as she said, we're seeking a fair wage for our jobs that we do provide. And, you know, I recently moved to Angel's Camp, so I'm, you know, obviously in the county, and I really love it here. Just want to say that we are here, and we do provide for the services for people that really need it. Yeah. Thank you very much.
No more public comments in the room. I will close public comments.
All right, we will go on to recognition and acknowledgements. Do you have one more? You need to get in.
This is my son, Benjamin Range. Ben is 27 years old. He is a handicapped adult. He has a syndrome called Angelman Syndrome, which affects his developmental, developmental abilities. He's been challenged raising and caring for Ben, and also holding down a full-time career. Finding quality help is a huge issue in, in this county. One, we are very spread out, and wages are low. I would appreciate any help that you guys are willing to do, and I look forward to meeting you at the bargaining table.
I will close public comments, and we will move on to staff. We will move on to our recognition and acknowledgements. This is a proclamation from the administrative office proclaiming, proclamation recognizing the Calaveras County Auditor's Office for receiving a certificate of achievement from, for excellence in financial reporting for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2022. And I see we have a lot of staff here, and they all deserve to be here. I'll read the proclamation. This is proclamation recognizing the Calaveras County Auditor's Office for receiving a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. Whereas Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, the GFPA, has awarded the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting to the County of Calaveras for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2022. And whereas, Calaveras County Auditor's Office is the agency that produces the annual comprehensive financial report. And whereas, the report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrated constructive spirit of full disclosure and to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. And whereas, the certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. It is attainment, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by the government and its management. Is there any public comments? Staff? Somebody? Kathy? Staff members? Come on up. We want to hear from you. This is a great award. This is fantastic for all of you.
Good morning, Chair Toffenelli, and Board members. Good morning, CEO Hitchcock. Thank you for bringing this proclamation forward. I have an absolutely amazing staff, very dedicated and devoted to the public servants to provide this transparency. We also have other dedicated departmental fiscal staff who are very responsive to our office in providing us all the data and information that we need in order to provide these reports for the public. And if anybody in the public is interested, the report is actually on my website for viewing. You might need to call somebody to interpret it, and that's fine. We are always available. Anyway, I'd like to really thank my staff, if you guys want to come up.
Come on, come on.
They're a force to reckon with, so they really do work hard. They really are dedicated to the ultimate goal of this office.
And they sing and play guitar, too.
Yes. Yes, they do.
Any other public comments? Do we have any online? No? Okay. Board comments? Jack? Ken?
I was just going to comment, just congratulations. It's nice that, you know, we, it's part of our strategic plan to be transparent and with everybody, and you guys are definitely leading the way on that, and I really appreciate all the work that you guys do.
Thank you.
Huverty? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just, just to follow up, I mean, it's been spectacular working with you, Kathy, in your office, and, you know, I think overall, the county's been working together better for quite a few years now, so thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to say thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to congratulate all of you, too, and very good job, all of you. And it's very nice working with all of you when you have, we have an issue, we have a problem, we come to you. It seems to be taken care of very quickly, and great accomplishment here. It's not awarded very easily, so you guys accomplished a lot here. So I am open for a motion.
Also move?
Motion by Supervisor Huverty.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stopper. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Passes 5-0. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Calaveras Auditor's Office is recognized and honored for achieving and maintaining the standard of excellence in financial reporting that has earned Calaveras County the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Associations of the United States and Canada, the GFPA, for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended 20, excuse me, June 30, 2022, is passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras, State of California, the 28th day of November 2023.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's my spot.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. Consent agenda or items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Is there any Board member wish to remove an item?
Just, item 12, just for a simple question.
Item 12 by Supervisor Stopper. Any other item? Is there any staff member wish to remove an item? Seeing none? Is there any member from the public? Online?
I have a gentleman who has raised his hand. Would you like me to unmute them? Mr. Fraser, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Good morning. I emailed you a few moments ago. I'm having some real problems with the Zoom today. But in any event, actually, I'm going to retract this and wait till the item comes up for discussion.
Is this on a regular agenda item? There's two items on regular agenda, because right now we're on consent.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm backed up on the Zoom. I'll just file out until this one comes up.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm bringing it back to the Board. I'm open for a motion for the remainder of the consent agenda minus item 12.
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Stopper.
Second.
Second. Supervisor Follendorf. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Passes 5-0. We'll come back to item number 12. This is an action item for public works. Authorize the Director of Public Works to amend Department of Public Works 2023 Capital Improvement Program adopted by the Board of Supervisors on March 28, 2023. Supervisor Stopper, you pulled this item?
With these three projects, I mean, being moved to next year, will there be adequate time to fulfill all the projects that were already on list for next year? Nothing will be bumped?
No, there shouldn't be anything bumped at all.
Okay. That's, that's my own question.
Is there any other question by the Board? Any public questions on this item? Any online? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Board. I'm open for a motion.
Move.
Motion by Supervisor Follendorf. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Guaramendi. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Move on to the regular agenda. This is informational item number 18 from administrative office to receive an update from staff on the Calaveras Visitor Bureau's Tourism Promotion Activities. This is Jamie and Morgan.
Chair, as I work for the, or I'm employed by the Calaveras Visitors Bureau, I'm going to
Recuse yourself?
Recuse myself for this. Thank you.
We'll call you back in after the meeting.
Good morning, Chair.
Good morning Chair and members of the board. I'm Jamie Andrew. I'm the Principal Analyst with the Administration Office and I sit on the CVB Board, the Calaveras Visitors Bureau Board as the County Representative. So here today I'm going to provide an update of the CVB over the last year. Tourism is the largest industry in the county. The CVB is the sole entity that markets our county locally, nationally, and internationally. According to Visit California and Dean Relling, visitors brought in 246 million dollars in tourism to Calaveras County in 2022, just five million over our neighboring county Chulani. KCRA 3 in Sacramento reached out to the CVB for an interview to ask what were we doing better post pandemic than our sister counties? The CVB spends 60% of their, 63% of their budget on direct marketing, 25 on payroll, and 2 in overhead. The CVB has two welcome centers. There are currently six part-time and two full-time employees that staff these locations. The CVB has personally greeted 12,624 people face-to-face this year so far, which is just about 2,000 more than last year's total, and we still have a month to go. The main CVB Welcome Center is in Angels Camp and is open seven days a week from 9:30 to 4:30 PM. There are just over 300 hotel rooms in the entire county and 200 of those rooms are right down the street. Visitors from Worldmark usually make CVB their first stop. The Murphy's Welcome Center is open five days a week from 10 to four. Since the last presentation the CVB has given to the board, they have had to order 10,000 additional copies of their Visitor's Guide. 60,000 copies were distributed to visitor centers, local hotels, international airports, and other key areas in Northern California. On average, 80,000 digital downloads from the website happen annually. The cost of the Visitor's Guide is covered solely by the participants. The CVB works with Hook, Line &amp; Thicker, which is a digital marketing group. To date, Hook, Line &amp; Thicker has delivered 32 stories in various high-level publications nationwide. Most recently, Calaveras County was featured on Google's News with Randy Yagi's Training Travel article. Google News reaches 280 million readers worldwide. The CVB followed up their ad in the United Kingdom's National Geographic Traveler with an ad in London Evening Standard. According to Visit California's rep in Eland, 200,000 airline seats were added to their, this year from Heathrow to San Francisco. The UK has historically been our largest international market and we're starting to see that rebound post pandemic. The CVB, in partnership with Hook, Line &amp; Thicker, has held different campaigns and contests which have garnered a large amount of usable content and visitor interaction in a popular calendar. The CVB's very own Jessica Johnson writes monthly blogs that are posted on the CVB website. The monthly blogs are a great marketing tool and are extremely popular. Over the course of the last several years, the CVB has developed relationships with travel writers and influencers. These writers can vetted through the Visit California and Public Relations at the Gold Country's Visitors Association. Through four travel writers and influencers, the CVB was able to reach over 600,000 Instagram users alone. Incidentally, our travel writer piece, which was done in April, was just released this past, past month for Sacramento Magazine on visiting charming businesses of McCollum Hill. County employees, Inabelle, Robin Glenville, and Kelly Zandheiser are part of this year's Calaveras Leadership Team. The team chose to work with the CVB and are in the midst of creating an outstanding online scavenger hunt. This game will include all of the museums in the county, of which we count seven. CVB contracted with Plaster AI this year to collect data on how many people come to the county, where they visit, how long they stay, and where they come from. This tool allows the CVB to spend marketing dollars more efficiently by targeting individual markets and zip codes. The CVB has also given the county a log-on to this, which will be very helpful in our upcoming Parks Master Plan. The City of Angels has also found it extremely useful in planning their way forward. Since January 2023, through the past summer season, Calaveras County has seen an average of 24% increase on last year's visitation numbers. Our largest markets are San Francisco, Oakland, and Berkeley, followed by Sacramento, Roseville, and Folsom, and a third would be San Jose, Sunnyvale, and Santa Clara. The CVB sponsors and participates in events. Since the CVB's last presentation, the CVB has financially sponsored a mani-bout at the Rage and Cajun Festival in San Andreas, Lumberjack Dine West Point, Grape Stompin' Murphy's, Irish J Hermit Fest, and Dia Los Montros. Sorry, I can't say that very well. The CVB has participated in the Lumberjack Jamboree, Arnold, the Dogwood Festival, as well as several Fourth of July events. The CVB manned a booth at the Vows Bridal Fair this last month. The CVB will be participating in the Angels Murphy's and Valley Springs Christmas Parades and the Copperopolis Tree Lighting. In December, the CVB will also release their second annual Calaveras Calendar and their 2024 Calaveras Dreaming Visitor's Guide. The CVB has just completed their strategic planning session and will complete the 2024 Goal-Oriented Document for their December Board Meeting. The CVB wants to align their goals with the county's strategic plan. The CVB Board thanks you for your time and support as a reminder the CVB looks to support, looks for support, looks to support local events both financially as well as help create strategic marketing support. Our county's unique events are what will continue to bring visitors to our area. Please contact the CVB with any ideas or help needed. I also have Morgan on the line if she wants to add anything. Yes?
Good morning Supervisors. Chair Tofanelli, thank you so much for having me. Can you guys hear me over?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, awesome. I'm so sorry that I can't be there in person, but Jamie, thank you so much for presenting where we've kind of come over the last year. I'm incredibly proud as I continue to see how much we have been able to affect and as we dig deeper and still try and find how we can support the county more in the changing climate of tourism. We all saw that unprecedented numbers that we weren't expecting through the end of the pandemic. And in the recent strategic planning session that we had, it really became evident that we have to be proactive in assessing how things can continue to change and how we can share coverage across the entire county for the entire events and attractions in each of our areas. I'm here if you have any questions again. I apologize that I'm not there in person.
Any board comments or questions?
Just a quick question and a comment. Comment is next. I really appreciate the support. Thank you very much for the updates. And I think they have a good agreement going. Can you include a balance sheet next update? Pionell was great.
You got it.
And then my second question is, or my question is, how did you respond to KCRA? What are we doing different than our county, fellow counties?
That I will have to lean on Morgan for. That was prior to me sitting on the board.
Well, I actually didn't respond to that with Martin. I'm sure he's been personally going to be the best person. But I know that he was referring a lot to the natural attractions that we had that made people feel safe in traveling during the pandemic, where there was a lot of outdoor activities and things that were really unique that obviously we all love about this county.
Any other board comments or questions?
Yeah. When we're doing outreach through KCRA like that for those safe places and everything, are we including education on how to treat environment while we're there? Morgan?
That's a great question. Should we have that again? Yes. I know that through social media, we've done that.
Yeah.
It was a hot topic during the pandemic and, yes, absolutely. I know we've done socials on that. I don't know if that was discussed via KCRA.
Yeah, and I understand that. It's just a good message to put out for, for everyone visiting the county, you know. You know, it's a beautiful place and we should all respect it so we can come back later again to the state's same greatness that they visited prior, so. Thank you.
Love it. Thank you.
Any other? Seeing none, open up to public comments. Are there any public comments? Morning.
Good morning. My name is Christopher Bummel. My website is calaveras2024election.com. This government invites intense public scrutiny by failing to demand accountability from CVB Board President Morgan Gocci and CVB Executive Director, District 3 County Supervisor Martin Hubbardey concerning the CVB's deceptive practices. Ms. Gocci's hyperbolic claim of unprecedented amounts of tourism dollars, calling that a mind-blowing amount when describing the county's 246 million dollar annual tourism revenue in 2022, deceptively spins statistics into falsity by a critical fact admission of the negative growth of annual tourism revenue. Ms. Gocci stated the county's $30 million increase in 2022 annual tourism revenue was a substantial gain over 2021. However, factually, the real purchasing power of 2022's annual tourism revenue is actually 5% lower in Consumer Price Index adjusted dollars than 2019, the last year before the pandemic disruption. Additionally, the CVB's 2021 federal tax return provides irrefutable evidence that Mr. Hubbardey, as the Executive Director of the CVB, has known the CVB to be a mutual benefit nonprofit corporation since July 12, 2021, and no longer a public benefit nonprofit corporation. CEO Hitchcock and DA Uke must take very seriously the extensively evidenced allegation of the CVB's fraudulent misrepresentation of its legal entity type, demanding answers of Ms. Gocci and Mr. Hubbardey to the following questions. On what date did the CVB adopt bylaws legally required for a mutual benefit nonprofit corporation? Why are the CVB's defunct public benefit nonprofit corporation bylaws last amended on March 1st, 2018, still published on the CVB's website falsely proclaiming the CVB's legal entity type to be a public benefit nonprofit corporation when factually the CVB's legal entity type converted to a mutual benefit nonprofit corporation on July 12, 2021? Why did Ms. Gocci falsely affirm by signing the Tourism Promotion Agreement that the CVB was a public benefit nonprofit corporation when in fact she is legally responsible for knowing the CVB has been a mutual benefit nonprofit corporation since July 12, 2021? Why is the CVB's legal entity type misrepresented in the Tourism Promotion Agreement, the official funding document with the county, at the directive of the California Office of the Secretary of State and the Office of the Attorney General? Substantial evidence obtained from Public Records Act requests that must prompt an investigation will soon be delivered to the Calaveras County Auditor Controller, the DA, and the grand jury. Thank you very much.
Are there any other public comments?
Hi, I'm Jessica with the Calaveras Visitors Bureau. I just wanted to talk about how we do have a Hop Light Week program that's on our website that talks about educating folks when they come to visit and enjoying outdoor activities that we have, how to do that responsibly, pack it in, pack it out. We also like to mention it often on our social media and I would welcome any other input and I would love to include that with the social media.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Good morning Chair and members of the board. Kathy Goingorgan, Economic Development. I just want to say what a great partner the CVB has been to economic development, to the county, whether it's working through the pandemic, passing out PPE, meeting with businesses with masks, working with them one-on-one during disasters and residency events. The CVB has been amazing getting the word out. They're, they're a great resource to our county and I appreciate them greatly. Thank you.
Other public comments in the room? Seeing none. Is there any online?
There is no public comment online.
Okay. Well, that was an informational item, so thank you very much for your presentation and thank you CVB for participating in the parade and craft fair this coming Saturday in Valley Springs. Thank you very much. With that, we'll get, can we get Martin back in the room? All right, we will move on to item number 19. This is a resolution from Human Resources to adopt a resolution authorizing, one, changes to the salary ranges of the Assistant Assessor, Public Works Deputy Director, and Information Technology Director classifications. And two, updated job descriptions for the Assistant Assessor and Information Technology Director positions. Judy, this is your item.
Yes. Good morning Chair Tofanelli, Honorable Members of the Board. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management Director. And I'm bringing before you today the request to increase the salaries of these three positions. We are, we've had two of the positions, the Assistant Assessor and the Deputy Director of Public Works, vacant for a year now and we have not been able to successfully recruit. And then we also have the position of the Information Technology Director coming vacant. And so we want to be able to have a successful recruitment and get somebody in the position as soon as we can. With raising these positions, we're asking for 10% for each of the salaries. That does not bring them to market. We do understand we do have a class and comp study currently going on. We're expecting final data by the end of January. But we want to be able to get these recruitments going, recruiting over the holidays. It does take a little bit longer. So by the time that we get the, the study, the final information, we know that these positions won't be up to market and there would be future, most likely future increases. But we do want to be able to start recruiting now so we can try and, and have a successful process. We also, with the upcoming vacancy of the, right now it is called the Deputy, Deputy CAO Information, CIO, Chief Information Officer. We are asking to change that title to the Director of Information Technology and then also some very small changes to the job description. The other, the Assistant Assessor, I'm sorry, yes, Assistant Assessor, we are also making some minor changes in the MQs so also we could reach out to more people and have more applicants. And can I answer any questions?
Board questions? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? In the room? Seeing none. Is there any online?
There is no online public comment.
Okay, I'll bring it back for the board. Open for a motion?
Move.
Motion by Supervisor Follendorf. Second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Hubbard. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. It's an action item in Public Works to introduce, waive, first reading, and authorize the summary publication of an ordinance amending Section 12.09.020 and 12.09.030 of the Calaveras County Code to clarify application deadlines and fees. Robert Packenger, this is your item.
Good morning. We have been working on application processes, working with our other divisions within the county on implementing the platform program, let's say, for outdoor dining. So we're at that point where all of that is done. Unfortunately, when the ordinance was put in place, there was a deadline of 18 months to have the applicants submit an application. It wasn't ready at that time. So we are adjusting that timeframe to begin now an 18-month window for the applicants, whoever wishes to submit an application for an outdoor dining, that they could do so now and the, the clock starts now. The other thing that we needed to do was to clarify how fees were going to be collected. We're not proposing any real change. It's just a clarification in the ordinance that the way the existing fees are collected for encroachment permits will be the same thing that's applied for the platforms. I believe I saw that there is, right?
Yeah, it's just, it's two changes to the ordinance that was adopted about a year ago. And yeah, as Mr. Packenger said, it's applying Public Works and Buildings existing fees to these types of permits.
Any board questions? Supervisor Hubbard?
Yes, I wanted to ask, I know we've spoken about this before, that it is transferable. I think it is direct toward County Council. But if I'm reading this correctly, this is a one-shot deal. But if I'm reading this correctly, this is a one-shot deal because 18 months from now, a new business that comes into town and wants to put in a platform, it's not viable.
Correct. The ordinance was drafted to state that there's essentially an 18-month window for folks to get their applications in. Of course, the board could always, you know, amend the ordinance in the future if there was some sort of great, you know, desire for that or market for that. But yes, it's 18 months from the date applications are being made available with this change.
Also, could I ask, Robert, the letter, thank you very much for giving me the letter as well as the timeframe on how it all breaks down going forward for the applicants. Will that letter go to all businesses or just businesses that currently have a platform?
The intent is just to have that go to the businesses that currently have a platform.
And there are businesses that have platforms now, I'm sorry, that had them in the past but don't have them now. I think we probably should address them as well, just so that they, if that's all right.
Yes.
Okay. And then my second question is, I think Doug questioned, but I'm incredibly concerned about the safety of outdoor dining, and I think that what I don't understand is it says that there's a 24-inch barricade that you have to have, but there's no way to affix it to the ground, to the pavement, is my understanding. So I don't know how that works.
Right. We will work with building on those details of how they're supposed to build that platform so that it's safe and away from the traveled way.
Right. I'm just concerned about a car actually going into that, that whatever barricade there is, is strong enough to actually hold it back.
Yes.
Okay.
Be pretty dumb.
Barrels of water, unless you're driving my truck, Martin.
Is that it?
That's it, thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, Supervisor Follendorf.
Some of them are going to piggyback off of Martin, going to the safety of the platforms. Because of future construction, utility, how, without making them permanent, do, are you guys going to be able to make, support that so we can, they can move it around? Because I know that was an issue a couple of years ago, from a safety standpoint, some of the businesses were, didn't want to put the investment in, if they were going to have to remove it because of any work that needed to be happening with utility or even just debris.
Right.
Because the drainage ditches in some of those areas. So are we going to tackle that? I know Doug, you had worked with Marita on that, but are we going to?
The ordinance that, as it is written right now, requires whoever puts that platform in place to maintain it, make sure drainage is clear, and if utilities need to come in, they need to accommodate that work. But as far as how they build that structure so that they could be semi-permanent, we'll have to speak with Doug on.
Well, I guess the other thing I'm also concerned is too, is that they do have to remove it, it's making it where, whether the county or the utility is not liable for them being, having to remove it.
I think the way that ordinance is written, tell me if I'm wrong, is that the county can come in and just remove it if it needs to.
Yeah, so those are good questions, Supervisor Follendorf, as to the first one, and we did have those discussions when the ordinance was adopted and decided that rather than, I think originally we maybe discussed, you know, having folks make it to where public work staff could access the drainage and whatever, and we decided instead that that was going to be their responsibility. And then at the end of the day, and Supervisor Hubbardey, you're absolutely right, you know, the county can essentially, this is an encroachment permit, right? We're letting folks encroach into county right-of-way, free of charge, other than obviously permitting fees and using the space. And so if the county needs to reoccupy that right-of-way for any reason, it is the responsibility of the owner to accommodate that.
Okay. I just wanted to talk it out again one more time so the public can hear, because I know that was just some of the things that, at least for me, had come up again in conversation. Okay. Okay. And then the other one now, my mind went blank. Oh, yeah, the timeline and getting it out to all businesses. So you answered that one, but timeline outside of the 18-month window, we can't control what the future, you know, if there's going to be a want for future businesses or changes. So as we get through this, can we have a revisit of what this looks like, maybe not at the 18-month mark, but some kind of type of timeline before we hit that to revisit it from the, back to the board to have that type of discussion?
We can certainly do that, Supervisor Follendorf. We would, part of, or I think the reason, motivation behind the timeframe was due to, you know, the environmental analysis that we did. So it might, with the understanding that if we were to extend that or make it a more, more participants, it theoretically would require additional or different environmental analysis, but we can certainly have that conversation.
Okay. Okay. Because I don't want to, the opportunity, I don't want to shut any new businesses, you know, call me why that want to, want to do that, if it makes sense for their business and where they have that.
So I just had one more question, and that's, Robert, so the letter goes out, everybody has 30 days to take down what they, what they have currently. So there will be a long period that there won't be any outdoor dining on the main street because it's going to take obviously that much time to get the application done as well.
Yes, and they need to meet the building department's requirements once they decide to come back and put something in place. They have to meet all requirements, of course, for traffic safety in the building department's requirements.
Thank you. Done.
I have a couple of questions that have to do with the fees. Are fees already set for these? Have we set the fees even though we don't have this implemented yet? Are the fees set for both Public Works and Building?
The fees are the same that we have for all encroachment permits.
Okay, so those fees are standard in the building department when they submit their applications and what their proposals are, those fees are set for what our building permits are now?
Good morning, Doug Oliver, Chief Building Official. The fee that we had proposed was the all-other permit fee, which is already established by your board, which was the kind of, the catch-all permit fee for projects that come in that don't really fit cleanly in a category. This is unique because it's an assembly, it's a, you know, commercial, but it's also a movable platform. So there's a lot of moving parts, and that seemed like the best fee type that we could use. If your, if your board is unhappy with that, we can explore a couple of other options, but that, that felt like the best fit for what we're doing here.
Well, the reason I'm bringing it up is under section 12.09.030, application requirements, it's been crossed out, the part at the bottom, near the bottom of section six, the Board of Supervisors made by resolution, adopt fees, recover the costs of implementing this chapter, and such resolution may be amended from time to time.
I can speak to that, Supervisor Follanelli. So when this, that's the existing language from when this ordinance was adopted a little over a year ago. And as you just stated, it sort of contemplates that there would be a separate fee resolution that would come to the board at some point to impose fees for these types of permits. What we've done here instead, since we were already amending the ordinance to tweak the 18-month timeframe, is to just amend the ordinance rather than saying, okay, the board's going to do a separate fee resolution for these types of permit applications. It's applying Public Works' existing encroachment permit fee, which is a deposit, and then Buildings' existing other structures permit fee for the building piece.
And I just want to make sure, since that's been crossed out in this ordinance, that if we find out a year from now, we're not charging the right amount of fees to cover our costs, that this is no longer in there, that it can come back to the board a year from now and say, hey, we need to amend our fees, either lower them or raise them or whatever we need to do to cover whatever cost or we're charging too much. This has been crossed out.
Right, so it's been crossed out and replaced with language tying it to the two departments' existing fees. If those fees were to change, so hypothetically, if at some point in the next year, Public Works updated their encroachment permit fee where it was no longer the deposit they have today, that would automatically be applied to this, same with Doug's fee. Or, of course, if the board decided, if at any point in the future, you no longer want to use those fees and you want to come up with some brand-new special fee for this, we would just amend the ordinance.
And I understand that we're just using their standard fees, and it's not tied to this ordinance, but I wanted to make sure at some point, since this ordinance exists, that there's an opportunity if something happens that we can, okay. Those are my questions.
Chair, you raised it, one more question for me then. On this letter that's going out, I think it's important that we put what all the fees are on the letter as well, so that, I think that the, it'll be the tipping point for some people not going forward with the application.
I think we could do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Supervisor Stopp.
Just, just one thing, since we're talking about tying these fees into Building and Public Works, any consideration of having an outside source to our fee schedules in the future when it comes to this so that they aren't tied directly to the people that are facilitating it and unbiased outlook on it might be something we might want to consider.
It's not tied directly to this ordinance, but this is tied to the fees from both Public Works and Building and, you know. I had a lot of questions on with the building fees as they move forward, and I think an outside source would be the best avenue. I've already repeated myself, so I'll stop.
Okay. All right, question? I'll open it up to public. Is there any public comments on this item? Seeing none in the room, or are there any online?
There is no public comment online.
All right, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the board. Open for a motion, and I think Supervisor Hubbardey wanted to add the thing that you just brought up about putting it on the letter.
Oh, yes.
So if you want to make that part of the motion?
I'll make a motion that, that we approve this with the caveat that we actually put the fees for the permits on the letter that goes out to the businesses.
And prior businesses that made.
Prior, and prior businesses that, that had during the pandemic that had outdoor dining law.
I have a motion?
Doug?
Second, I have a motion by Supervisor Hubbardey, second by Supervisor Follendorf. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Five zero. Did I say four zero? Five zero.
Mark wants it's supposed to be back until April.
Sorry, five, five zeros. Thank you for pointing that out, Supervisor Follendorf.
Ms. Mo, second.
You can add the five. All right, we'll move on to supervisor announcements. In compliance with Government Code 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out. We'll start with Supervisor Stopp.
CSAC, a lot of good things talked, talked about, you know, homelessness and affordable housing crisis is predominant throughout the U S is a major topic, you know, along with all the normal California talking, talks about, you know, environment, fire suppression and everything else. You know, it was good to see Mr. Hubbardey and Mr. Garry Mindy there. We didn't get in too much trouble, and we saw our former county council, Ms. Stutfield. She, she's looking very healthy for not having to deal with us anymore. She is happy. She is happy. She's doing well, and she's very happy with Ms. Edwards and her follow-up and has great things and questions about everyone here, so I just want to say that to you all, so that's all.
Thank you. Supervisor Follendorf.
I attended LAFCO last week, and Executive Director John Benoit has announced that he will be retiring in June of 2024. So the board has put together an ad hoc committee, and we'll start going through the recruitment over until then. It's not a hard date, so that allows us not to have to, you know, settle. If we need to go longer than that recruitment period, we will, but he is starting to phase out, and most of us do not want him to leave, but he's ready, so.
Supervisor Garry Mindy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eleven communities, the holiday season's been busy. What I'm required to report out is I did attend the LAFCO meeting, and I attended the CSAC conference.
Supervisor Hubbardey?
On November 11th, I was honored to speak at the Veterans Day event in Murfreesboro where I read the county proclamation for veterans. 14th through 16th, again, I was at CSAC in Oakland. Very quickly, great, a little mini-town hall, faith Lutheran church. The turkey trot was amazing this year, more people than ever. White Pines Laser Show was outstanding the other night. Looking forward to tomorrow morning when our CEO speaks at the Chamber event, and just reminding everybody that it's giving Tuesday, and we have a lot of great 501(c)(3)'s in the county to donate to.
Thank you. And I have nothing to report out. C E O Hitchcock, you have anything to report?
It's at the hospital.
Nothing?
At the birth.
County Council?
It's.
Nothing. All right then. County Clerk? Nothing. All right, well then, we will stand adjourned.